Okay, the October tenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Corvallis School Board is called to order at five seventeen P M. There's a lot of feedback too, so. Yeah. Let's try that again. Is it, is the other speaker on though? Yeah, okay, cool. I'll reread that. That way it's not a big old echo. The October tenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the school, Corvallis School Board is called to order at five seventeen P M. In the interest of public health and safety for all community members, especially immunocompromised individuals and their families. The Corvallis School Board will continue to offer a virtual option for board member and district personnel participation. Additionally, public comment is available at some meetings, both in person and virtually. Information about how to provide public comment is available on the Corvallis School District website. The board agenda and packet, as well as the link to the district YouTube channel, are available on the school board page on the district website. Public meetings are live streamed on the district's YouTube channel and a recording is posted to the same channel typically the day after the meeting. Today we have Chris, Sammy, Judah, Shawna, and myself in attendance in person, and Therese is excused. And the first item on the agenda is the acknowledgement of Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we're going to take turns reading that.
Corvallis School District acknowledgement of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas Christopher Columbus, a man who, who inaccurately described as having discovered the Americas, came upon land that was already inhabited by indigenous peoples. And whereas Columbus voyaged to the American, the Americas led to the introduction of transatlantic slavery, land disposition, and genocidal acts against indigenous people. And.
Whereas the city of Corvallis and current-day Benton County are on the lands, on lands fully inhabited, inhabited by the Kalapuaia people before removal for settlers. And whereas education is a necessary component for creating a more equitable and anti-racist community, nation, and world, where, and whereas the Corvallis School District has made a commitment to equity and anti-racism, and.
Whereas the Corvallis School District has an opportunity to uniquely reach and educate children as touchstone in the community. And whereas the Corvallis School District has a responsibility to honor and respect the diverse histories of our community. And whereas the Corvallis School District recognizes and acknowledges the significant contributions made in our community by indigenous people and commits to ensure greater understanding of these contributions by all students through Oregon S B thirteen curriculum. And.
Whereas the idea of Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in nineteen seventy seven by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations. And whereas the state of Oregon does, oh, the state of Oregon does formally recognize Columbus Day. We need to update this. And whereas the city of Corvallis has proclaimed the second day of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Corvallis since two thousand fifteen. And whereas the state of Oregon has proclaimed the second day of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day since two thousand seventeen. We did update it. Whereas the day should be recognized for the indigenous people of the Americas.
Therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Education of the Corvallis School District to hereby proclaim Monday, October twelfth, twenty twenty, as well as the second Monday of October annually, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the district. And strongly encourage families, staff, and community members to join in existing local Indigenous Peoples' Day celebrations. And encourage all schools in the district to help highlight this day in great appropriate ways, as well as highlight the contributions of indigenous peoples to the local community, nation, and beyond, both historically and in current times. Adopted this day October eighth, twenty twenty.
Thank you. And again, we reread those every time we have them to reaffirm C S D's commitment to these proclamations. And just for public awareness, the Corvallis, the city of Corvallis proclamation signing is on Monday. And that will be happening during programming, starting at one P M. The signing will happen somewhere around two, and that's at the Prax Center at O S U is where that signing will be taking place for the city of Corvallis. And the next item on the agenda are board member reports. Does anybody have any reports?
Last week I was able to go to the Dev Northwest celebration that they had, where they are going to be building affordable homes and townhouses. And it was really exciting to see and hear what they're doing in South Town, building these new homes for under three hundred thousand for the people to be, to purchase. So that was exciting. But I think what impressed me the most was that the community effort that's behind all of this. And they mentioned you, Ryan, and Boys and Girls Club. Helen was there. Lots of people were there working together to really, you know, create this and celebrate this. So I think that was the thing that really was impressive was so many community members there to be part of this. So that was exciting.
Thanks, Chris. Any other board member?
Thank you, Chair. I have two updates from, one from yesterday. I attended the downtown Corvallis inaugural public meeting for a nonprofit that is forming and aims to be the nonprofit that will operate as Main Street Corvallis organization, which will enable it to receive some funds to revitalize downtown Corvallis. It was really great to see Sarah Devine and the Corvallis School District in attendance there to really listen and be there to, to listen to the conversations going on. I think that's a very promising conversation. One thing that might have an implication for our school district, I would say, is there is a possibility of a T I F tax increment. F stands for something that is similar to the urban renewal, renewal taxing districts in South Downtown. So as a reminder for all of us, those districts are a way for taxing districts to say any growth or increments in taxes for certain future years are going to be set aside to, for certain projects. And this board have endorsed the urban renewal for South Town. And we can see the impact on affordable housing and the Lincoln School community because of that. So a downtown tax incremental district may impact, will impact our revenue as a school district. And it's a conversation that may come toward the city council sometime soon. The Chamber of Commerce, to my understanding from the conversation yesterday, intends to support that proposal. So that's from yesterday. Today, I saw Ryan there. I attended the inauguration of the Benton Community Foundations Center. And it was really great grand opening for a community center where the offices of Benton Community Foundation is, but also a location for nonprofits and organizations to meet and gather at a very affordable price, where they can reserve space and have retreats and other things. So just wanted to highlight that. It's in the, near the downtown area. So it might be a resource for our school district as well.
Thanks, Sammy. Any other board members? Okay, and then my report is just that I was able to attend the Corvallis Public School Foundation meeting and hear what's going on with those efforts. And I always appreciate those conversations with them and for us to share back and forth. And then the other one that I attended was the Delta meeting, which was also great conversations with community that was there. And I always appreciate Marcian and Angel Harris's efforts in leading those meetings, so. The next item on the agenda is the O S B A and N S B A update. Sammy?
Thank you, Chair. So there are several updates I shared in the docket, and I'll reference them at a high level. I've been involved in conversations statewide and national on advocating for our students in terms of advocating for funds for indoor air quality. The grant now is much more clear. And it looks like the criteria, to my understanding, we might not qualify because they're going to award it for, I think, certain criteria around income and rural or tribal representation. And the first round, the first year next year is going to be one school district from each E P A region. So Region ten, that's where in encompasses Washington, Oregon, and several other states. So I look forward to see which recipients will have it. But definitely our best practices might be a really good source for other districts to learn from. And I look forward to share any progress we do on the national stage for this grant. Also, there are several involvements that I mentioned in the report, a few things that are not highlighted there. The first one, I would like you to mark your calendar, and I see two candidates, and anyone who's watching as well, to mark their calendar for, three candidates, sorry, three candidates, and anyone who's watching. Please mark your calendar for Monday, November fourth. Well, it's here. It says the day before the appointment day or election day in Albany. The O S B A Legislative Roadshow happens that day for Lynn Benton Lincoln Board members. And the candidates are welcome to be there to listen in. It is a great opportunity for us to connect with peers regionally, but also to learn about the state priorities. So I'm going to give my colleagues here a sneak peek for the packets that will be shared. It includes the legislative priorities that O S B A is advocating for. One of them is the funding and making sure the current service level is accurately measuring what's the current service level needed for our school districts. The second priority is related to removing, or at least increasing, the caps on special education ratio for school districts. And the third one is tackling chronic absenteeism in a way that supports our students to show up at school and receive the care and support. So these are three high-level priorities. Staff will talk more in detail about it. Also, there is some O S B A business that you might be aware of. The first one is going to be for the first time since nineteen ninety eight, O S B A will be asking us as a school board member collectively to vote whether we will increase the dues for the first time in a progressive five-year plan, fifteen percent every year, and then an increase that's tied to the C P A. Now, that fifteen percent every year for five years and C P A, if in five years from now, we want to compare it. Back in nineteen ninety eight, the O S B A leadership decided to increase the dues with C P A only. We would have been getting double the revenue from this plan. So this is really modest plan to make sure that O S B A can sustain its services to its members. The services that we receive in terms of policy review and legal advice as well, and board development, and other, on pace, the insurance property and casualty insurance coverage. So all of these services are either subsidized or provided for free for members because of those dues. And right now we're paying with nineteen ninety eight dollars. We went into the regionals, and I'm chair with your, with your permission, I want to do a pop-up quiz. Tell me about one thing that's cost the same thing since nineteen ninety eight, and there's only one answer.
One thing?
Yes.
The O S B A dues?
Well.
Well, I mean, they said that.
Two things.
I was like.
O S B A dues and.
Not gas.
Costco hot dogs.
Oh, my gosh.
Even though they're kind of reducing the size of their sandwich, but that point is really for that kind of subsidized cost, it's really important for us to sustain those services. So this is a huge decision that our members will decide, and I ask for your support approving that measure, a resolution. The second resolution is going to be related to approving a third caucus and what could be the first caucus for L G B T Q, I two S plus board members anywhere in the nation. This proposal was approved by the O S B A Board after really strong and serious discussion how that would be supportive of our students and board members from the Pride community. And they decided to move that proposal forward. Now it is up for the members, each member of school board, to decide whether we would have such a caucus or not. And it will be named a Pride Caucus. Its draft bylaws goals are going to be shared with you. Last but not least, some modifications to the bylaws, requiring caucuses to have a formal way of reporting that's enshrined in the bylaws. And also, shall a caucus leader become a president or immediate past president, just like in my situation? Then those caucuses will get to send another representative to O S B A Board. So you would have two representatives, just like how regional districts in O S B A governance structure are structured. They will add another person when that person becomes a president or immediate past president. So these are the three resolutions. We will be voting on them at a board meeting anywhere between November fifteen and December fifteen. But if you have any questions, or you want to learn more about those resolutions, the Legislative Roadshow will provide those details. The last update, and I'll be very brief. If you don't have a hard copy of this, please let me know. I'll be happy to sign you up for a hard copy, and there are some, some, it's also free available as a soft copy for the American School Board Journal. It's the oldest school journal probably in the nation. And to this quarter's issue, it talks about basic governance roles and responsibilities, and also a few articles on A I and how it informs policies. So thank you for the time, and if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thanks, Sammy. Any questions from the board or comments? I just want to say thanks for those updates and that the, I went to the roadshow last year and found it super, not only informative, but helpful to connect with other boards too. And so I would encourage our board to sign up for that if you're not already signed up, if you have time, and check it out, along with making connections at the conference. Yeah, so thanks, Sammy, for that. And one thing too for the, for the bylaws change, that's not just for the caucus of color, it's for all the caucuses, right? Because I think you were using that as an example, just so it's clear to the public. So it'd be like any new caucuses and the current one is, the other one is the rural caucus.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure public understood that that wasn't specific just for one of the caucuses. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, oh, did you have your hand up? Go ahead. Sorry.
I just wanted to say how exciting it is to see this Pride Caucus come up for a vote. And I've had the opportunity to speak with one of the people who put a lot of effort and hard work into this. And so I'm very excited to see that that's nearing fruition.
Thanks, Judah. Okay, next on the agenda is a superintendent's report. So Ryan?
Yeah, I have a few things I wanted to highlight. The first one is that, again, next week is National School Lunch Week. So it's a celebration of the healthy meals we serve our kids. I'm going to be having lunch at Garfield, at C H S, and at Sheldon next week. So if you're able to join me for one of those times, you can reach out to Kim, and she's helping to organize those visits. So that is a great way to recognize the healthy meals, but also to remember that this year, all of our students are receiving free meals, which is a fantastic opportunity and something that makes a huge difference in full stomachs and. and being ready to learn. So it's a, it's a great thing. Um, second, I wanted to highlight the, um, under Senate Bill seven thirty-two, um, each district is, um, of ten thousand students or less are, is, um, required to have an equity committee beginning next school year. Um, as you know, we have a number of groups that are meeting, our Delta Group, our DEDI Group. Um, and so we have a DEDI meeting next week. And during that meeting, I, we've asked, um, one of the larger districts who's already has an equity committee going, um, to share a little bit about their, what they've learned, um, what, um, they would do differently. Some of the questions that, uh, members of our community can ask. Um, because the process will be that there'll be an application process. Um, and then I'll bring those applications forward, um, to you for approval. Um, also there's a connection between one of the members of our budget committee and that group. So, um, I, I feel like we're ahead in that we have groups that are already convening and having similar conversations. But I also wanted to tell you to know that that, um, process is underway. Um, and it really, it kicks off, um, with our DEDI group next week. Um, I wanted to give you an update on Osborne. Um, as you know, Osborne, um, is owned by the school district, but the day-to-day operations and maintenance is, um, under the responsibility of the city of Corvallis. And so, um, we are continuing to meet with the city. Um, we're waiting on some information on a structural analysis of the building. Um, so we're working with the city and with our insurance carrier. We won't know more for a couple of weeks would be my guess, but I just wanted to make sure that you know that conversations are happening. We have a meeting scheduled with the city next week. Um, and so I just wanted, again, that you know that that's on our radar and we're working, um, to try to take care of both our finances, but also the ability for, um, kids to learn to swim. Uh, two more things. One was that, um, recently Marcian was part of a national panel, um, focused on integrated English language development, um, which was really great. She has been part of a statewide cadre developing best practices that are being shared out. Um, and from those, from that, they were able to share, um, best practices across the country related to, um, English language development, um, and the integration of, or oftentimes thinking about, um, mainstreaming. And then the other piece is that she will be interviewed by Edweek, um, next week on the same topic. So, uh, we always have, um, incredible staff doing incredible work and it's nice when they are, um, seen for what they do, day in and day out. And then the last, um, update I have is around AP testing. So we get results from the college board every fall. And this year, um, for, for the first time in the last five, well, over the last five years, our numbers have continued to increase. But last year we had, uh, four hundred and fifty tests given at CV, five hundred and twenty tests given at CHS. And the highest percentages of students with threes or above on those tests. So while we continue to offer, um, AP courses, the number of, um, tests being taken, the number of credits kids are leaving CHS and CV with continues to rise. And I thought that was another area to celebrate, um, and recognize our schools for the work that's happening. So those were the things I wanted to make sure that I highlighted for you tonight.
Thank you Ryan. Questions, comments from the board?
Well, if I may, uh, just to thank Ryan for the updates on the Senate bill and, uh, maybe down, when we talk about the vacancies, advertising it to the committee members while it's not required, having members of the committee be considered for the application would be appreciated.
Yeah.
The Osborne, uh, we just listened, listened to a presentation that may require additional millions of dollars of funds. And I understand that the city, uh, has priorities that include, uh, maintaining or revamping or, uh, their facilities, including their city hall. Um, they're renting our space and at a very huge subsidized cost. And we're very lucky to have them, uh, serve our community and our kids, uh, with those services by their stewardship. Uh, this is my personal perspective, uh, require them to be good stewards of the building that they're leasing from us. And any additional investments into the city infrastructure needs to take that into account. Uh, it's not probably our role as school board members to tell them how to do that, but definitely as stewards of our own infrastructure, it's raised eyebrows. And, uh, I really appreciate your collaborative approach and working together. And I know, um, that we're working together to resolve this issue. But it, the, the timeline of having another proposal makes me really, uh, wonder if, uh, the priority of making sure Osborne, uh, goes back whole is going to be at the top of the priority before anything else. That would be my humble request, uh, for the city. If, if I may push that request personally or through the board action.
Good Sammy. Any other comments, questions? Um. Ryan, did you, you didn't say, how are the, um, what's the plan for the students athletes that use Osborne?
We have, um, plans to, we're working to, um, have space for practices. We're continuing to work on that, our athletic directors are. And then for our meets, we will be, um, on the road this year, uh, competing in other venues, um, while, um, Osborne is under repair.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for asking.
Yeah, I'm glad that the student athletes still are able to access the sport that they utilize that space for.
Sure.
And then I just wanted to say that, highlight, um, your report on the AP test, cause that's, there seems to be misconception about students being prepared from CSD. And I think that shows, um, just one more data piece for the community to consider in thinking about students being prepared for, um, higher ed, for those students that are on that track and how that's not only preparing them academically, but they're getting college credits. And so that's preparing them, saving them funding. Um, and the classes that they get are those, um, Z classes that count for any community college or public school in Oregon. And so I think that's really helpful for the community to know too, that it's not only like preparing them, it's also saving them money if they're going to college too, which I think is super great.
Yeah, that's, it's basically a thousand tests, um, taken last year. Um, and more kids earning threes and fours than, um, over the last five. So that's, that's, that's a good data point. A positive, it's positive data point.
Yeah, that's exciting to hear. Thank you. Okay, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, but, um, do we have public comment? Okay, so, um, we'll go ahead and open public comment then. Um, we'll now open the public comment period. We value the lived experiences of students, families, staff, and community and welcome public comment as a necessary and important part of the work of the district and board. The complete guidelines for public comment are available at the, on the registration table at the back of the room and on the board's webpage. Um, I will share a few important points right now. When it is your turn to speak, please come forward and have a seat and direct your comments to the board. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning individual district personnel. As a reminder, you have three minutes, um, to make your comments. I will try to get your attention and not interrupt you, cause it takes away from your time for the thirty seconds. But there is a little set of lights on this table right before you. Um, the green one is a start of your time. The yellow one is your thirty seconds and it turns red when your time is up. Um, at which point I will have to ask you to stop, um, speaking if you're still speaking. Following your comments, the board will have three minutes to ask clarifying questions, but are not able to engage in the conversation, which is also a hard part for us because we like talking to people and hearing from the community, but this is not a, a place where we're able to do that, um, in following our public meeting, um, processes. If board members would like to revisit a topic or issues brought up during public comment, they may do so at the appropriate time in the agenda. Before you start your, before you start your comments, please state that your name for the record and state whether you reside within the school district boundary. Okay, go ahead Kim. And there's a button right here. This turns red when the, um, mic's on.
All right, hello. And thank you so much for having me. Um, I've sent a couple of communications and I wanted to say.
Can you say your name again for the record?
Chris Blacker. I apologize.
And if you're within the district boundaries.
We are in, within the district boundaries. Um, I have two sons, Leticia Carson, third grade and first grade, and my wife's, uh, her nurse at the hospital. And so, um, I really appreciate y'all having me again and I appreciate the work you do. I think you focus on equity and progressive, um, ideals and, and, um, policies that I think are really important. I spent a lot of the last ten years of my life focusing on those things as well. And so I, I really appreciate you guys and the work you do. This is great. I feel like they should've had this on MSNBC. We would've had a lot more fun. But anyway, uh, the reason I'm here is the cuts to the current elementary Title I schools. And I, I will say, I wanted to apologize for my tone. I am just very frustrated with the current situation. And so I'm gonna try to be as clear as I can and, uh, keep to the three minutes. I shouldn't, didn't start my top stopwatch. I've worked at a lot of Title I schools before. And when you have cuts to Title I schools, especially elementary libraries, it kinda makes the hair on the back of my neck stand up. Because these are the kids that can't read. I mean, two-thirds of our kids can't read at grade level. And the number one priority of this board is I read it is to all have all kids reading at third grade, at grade level. And that, 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 that ties to the read to achieve federal funding and federal policy. And the reason that's so important, and I think most of you have a PhD or something in education or some, some experience with academic research, there's research on this. If kids can't read by third grade, they don't do as well afterwards. I have some personal experience with this. I worked at MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems Support. You're probably familiar with that. We were looking at some data, EOGs, and black and Hispanic kids scoring about forty-four, forty-five on, on reading. Okay, made sense. They, you know, these are English language learners and, and some poor black kids in Durham. And they were reading at the same level, but when we went to science, the African-American kids were at forty-five, forty-four, as you might expect. But the Hispanic kids were at eighty-six. And we said, okay, this is just, and we couldn't figure it out. And so we finally went down and we talked to the teacher and said, what is going on? And he came out and he said, oh, I got my magic weapon. And it was a science book, but it was in Spanish. Okay, so the lesson is if you can't read, you can't learn anything else. Okay, and you see that in the data. These Spanish kids could learn science, is, they, they could read in Spanish, they couldn't read in English. Well, our kids can't read in English. So my question is how is pulling libraries from them? Reducing their time being read to, reducing the amount of books they get to take home? These are kids who don't have access to libraries outside of school, a lot of them statistically. Really quick then, the SSA, when you filled out a form in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, you put down the two big things that you acknowledged as being the equitable issues that you have to deal with. They were K through three funding for classroom sizes and funding art and library to maintain the services they needed. These were things you addressed in significant detail because it was a grant-type application that you had to submit. And you had to have a reading achievement, demog, um, um, statistic you were gonna use. And that was third grade reading. I got five seconds?
Um, I just.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I have much more to say. It's my first time here. I just wanted to introduce myself, say, I'm sorry for the tone. Thank you for having me.
Oh, we still have.
I have much more to go.
We might have questions.
Sure, please have a question. And you can also, just because I've dealt with this before, you can ask questions that may even include some of your own thoughts and that's still a question. Just wanted to say.
We'll, I'll open that up for board member questions. Any questions? Go ahead Shana.
If you had a few more seconds, was there another final point that you wanted to make?
Yes, so this funding is from the SSA. The funding has not changed. It's actually gone up in the last couple of years and it's gonna continue, cause it's based off the taxes and the forecasting is pretty good. That money has to be used for supplemental services for people to go overcome inequities. I happen to spend a lot of hours in this school, like hundreds of hours. Last year, I continue this year, I will continue. These kids need a lot of help. I've read to them personally, hundreds of them. They don't read at a level they're really trying. The librarian is one of the best service people I've worked with and I've worked with a lot. She is incredible. She's been there nine years. She knows these kids by name. She knows the kids who are LGBTQI. She knows the kids who have issues at home. She knows the kids that are multilingual, multiracial. She provides that stuff. We talk about wanting to see our self, kids see themselves in the books. They don't have reading time anymore. They just have time to get in and get their book and out. None of them get to get read to anymore. STEAM, we had STEAM in there. I used to run STEAM camps. I'd wanna help them learn STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, Math. That's gone now. It's cause the library is closed three hours a day. Now these kids are Title I, they're also SSA. It's the poorest school in your district, by far. Seventy-two percent are in poverty. We also cut their breakfast window for fifteen minutes. We've talked to the library, the, the, I've talked to every single person I can that's involved in this. We can only get about a hundred kids breakfast in that ten minutes. But we have over two hundred and fifty that, that, that are totally, that are, they should be getting this. That intersection is really hard. I know you guys know Satinwood coming up off of Walnut. It gets really hard to get those kids in there. Sometimes the buses show up a minute late. They get their brown bags maybe, but it's not the same and we just aren't really being equitable to these kids. Most important SSA funding. I know we had a budget crisis. I don't know all the details. I just looked at the budget last night. Took me like four hours to get through the two hundred and eighty-four pages, whatever it is. We actually got more money from the core funding. Seven and a half million dollars more. I have it right here. We got more money from the core state and SSA funding didn't go anywhere. Title I just barely went down. Where did that money go? Because the things that you put in your thing that you did were, you know, lower class sizes was to more art, more library and more school hours. And all of that got removed in a single swipe. We are paying three million dollars more this year in salaries than last year. But we cut forty-three FTEs of teachers in the instruction. We hired one point four million for more district administrative salaries. We gave ourselves raises. We've done a lot of things to pull things and money out of the classroom to benefit ourselves. We gave ourselves raises, forty-five thousand, twenty thousand some people in the last three or four years while we were making these cuts. It just is so anti-equity. It is against everything that the people, like James Baldwin, these people I'm sure you guys look up to, the people that we're talking, Jim Green, the guy who got the SSA pass, that used to be the president of the board, now same as the board. These people care about equity. These kids need help.
Okay, thank you Chris.
You can't leave them, well, out there like this without a library, without art.
We do have to, we do have to stop the public comment time for your time. But I appreciate you, um, taking the time to come talk with us. Thank you. Um, is that our only public comment? Okay. Hearing no further public comments, the public comment period is now closed. And the next thing on the agenda is the Corvallis Public School Foundation Annual Report. And we have Angela. And Leslie, okay, yes. Do y'all have slides? Okay. This is the, this is the awkward time when the slides are. Yeah.
Okay. These were just collected from the printer yesterday. They still smell like ink and even our board don't have. Are you dr, you're driving the slide?
Yeah, I'm, you don't need me to.
Angela, maybe, well, it's getting set up. Can we just have this little, well, that's getting set up, yeah. In the comment, board member comments, I just wanted to, or the public comments period, uh, just a little bit. Still listening in my head, so, well, it's getting set up. Can we just have just a second? Thank you. We good? Okay, we're good. Okay, thank you Angela.
That's not our presentation.
Oh, yeah. Surprise, you get to do a different presentation.
I'm not equipped to discuss that.
Lauren says yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think Lauren wants me to present that.
Thanks for keeping us on track. Do you want the, yeah, they're both on. If you wanna share, you can pull the other one over if you.
We can probably share.
Okay.
Okay, so first for the benefit of anybody listening, I suppose, who, as I think I know everybody here, but others might not know, I'm Angela Hibbard and the Executive Director of the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation.
And I'm Leslie Hammond. I'm this year's, uh, chair of the foundation.
Of our board.
Of our board.
So, um, we were asked to come present tonight. As, as you know, in recent years, we've had this practice of having joint board meetings twice a year. And, uh, it seemed that a lot of times in those meetings, we end up spending a decent amount of our time kind of reporting out on the work of the foundation. And so we thought it might be more productive to just have a time when we come and report. And then that way, when we have our joint board meeting coming up, that time can be just focused on our collaborative work. So that's why we're here tonight. Um, can you advance please or? Perfect, thanks. So what we wanted to share today were just the highlights of the past. So what we wanted to share today were just the highlights of the past year. Talk about our team that expanded this year, work that we did together with the district, with Ryan, to update our MOU, our agreement that governs our relationship. Share highlights about this year's financials and our impact in the district. And just start to think about the future possibilities. So this is our team. Next week, I hope to announce our new part-time administrative assistant, who is working her way through all the necessary hoops before she gets clearance. And I don't wanna jinx it, so I won't say her name out loud, but we're excited about that. Many of you, I hope, have already met Erica Syrep, who's our community engagement manager, and she has been with us for exactly one year. That's a new role for us. It represents only the second full-time employee for the foundation. So it really represents a significant commitment on the part of our board to invest in our work. And we know that we cannot continue to grow and increase our impact in the schools if we don't engage more of the community in this work together. So that's really the focus of her work, is deepening those relationships with our district partners, with our staff, with our students, with our parents, our families, community organizations. And it's deep, long work, but already, just in one year, I think we've really started to see the benefits of that outreach work. And just even within, I think, our district relationships, staff relationships, just more engagement, which allows us to then share those impact stories with the community and engage the community. So that's our small and mighty team.
And then our board, our Board of Trustees. We currently have eighteen members on the Board of Trustees, and we're pretty committed to kind of creating a group of diverse professionals and diverse life experiences. We're term limited, so a board member can serve for two terms or three years. And then they, then you gotta go. And so in any given year, you could have quite a few new folks, which is this year. So we have seven new board members this year, which has been very exciting for Angela. And the others. But it just brings, you know, new energy and new insight and new perspectives. And so professions from current educators to retired educators to financial planners, lawyers, attorneys, real estate, just a lot of really great scope of experience.
And also, Ryan and Lou serve as ex officio members of the board as well, so I should have, we should add you to that. Yeah, like a little, we'll update the chart, yeah. So I mentioned, one of the things we did over this past year was update, actually really just rewrite our MOU. It's been in place since two thousand and fifteen. That's when the executive director of the foundation became no longer a school district employee and became fully autonomous employee of the foundation. So the MOU has been in place since then and reviewed every other year, but just kind of renewed all of those times. So I think it was Ryan initially who said, like, the last time we revisited it, that it didn't really reflect the partnership. So we set ourselves a goal last year of really examining that. I know we talked about it at one of our joint board meetings, like, what are the practices that these two organizations do that really solidify that partnership? And how do we commit to that? So that whomever are in these seats, there's, we know that that work will happen. So we did that, and we're proud of that work. Some of the changes to the MOU that we committed to were the fact that the superintendent and the board chair serve on our board and meet those attendance, you know, policies that everybody else does, and they do that, thank you. We committed to the fact that we will annually report back to this board on the health and the impact of the foundation. We also committed to the, this practice of our boards meeting jointly and further defined the contribution that the district makes to the foundation. Defined what that is, what it's for, and also a kind of ceiling and floor of, you know, what that looks like. So I think that was helpful to go through that. And part, another change in our MOU, which Lauren is probably the only one in the room who will really appreciate this, but we changed the relationship with how we share our accounting, financials, which actually does have an impact in our financial statements for this year. Ten years ago, it made sense for us to have kind of an agency account with the district. Now, as we've grown, that became inefficient. It was actually creating a burden on district staff, which isn't what we wanna do, you know, as a partner. And so we've stripped that out, that requirement, out of the MOU and have kind of shifted our practices, which really, the early information we've had from office managers and fiscal clerks and folks who access the dollars that we raise for people is that already it's a lot simpler and easier for people to actually utilize the dollars. So that was a lot of work that we did over the past year. And I'm gonna give a shout out to Lauren, who's behind me, who really helped us work through that, and her team, so. So financials. So here's where we stand at the end of our fiscal year. It's, hopefully you can see those numbers on the screen. For the first time, we raised more than a million dollars in one year, which is super exciting. That number represents a significant contribution to some initial work that happened on improving district turf facilities, so that's included in that number, as well as about a quarter of a million dollars in fundraising that we facilitated for specific school programs. So whether that's, you know, robotics, speech and debate club, all of those things where we're not, we, the foundation, are not actively fundraising, but we're managing that. And then additionally, of course, the fundraising that we do for our core work of supporting, you know, our learning enrichment, summer programs, educational access. So we did see, if you're a student of our annual report, you'll notice our assets saw one-time downward shift of about a hundred thousand dollars, which reflects this change in our accounting with the district. Had that not been the case, we would have seen a net asset increase of about three hundred thousand dollars, so.
To move forward with sort of the impact that this fundraising has created, we've awarded close to half a million dollars in foundation initiatives, which is actually the most ever that the foundation has been able to do. This includes thirty-one Imagine Grants. Imagine Grants are grants that staff and teachers of any, of any of the district schools can apply for, for creative projects, innovative projects, as well as fourteen YEA grants. YEA stands for Youth Empowerment and Action. And these are grants that children apply for, and they have great ideas. And our Grants and Scholarship Committee awards those, reviews them, and award them. Also gave support for the alternative middle school pathways that were piloted last year, which I understand were successful and continue to be successful. And then summer programs is a source that we put a lot of support toward, making sure students have opportunities for activities, learning activities in the summer, and also credit recovery in the summer. And then, as always, the family support and the Students in Need Fund rounds out kind of a lot of the grants and awards that we do.
I think I would like to add to this that when we think about the budget challenges that the district face, we recognize this is not a significant piece of that, like, this doesn't plug that hole. But I'm constantly amazed by what a small, the impact of a small investment of a two-thousand-dollar Imagine Grant, or like, it's incredible. And often, these dollars are going towards programs that create that type of belonging and connection that really impacts students. So I mean, I really have to credit the district teams who carry out the work, who receive these funds. But it's just, I'm always impressed by how much impact can happen from a relatively small investment, and then awful, often like ripple effects from that. Like, maybe it's an Imagine Grant one year, but then it becomes a broader district-wide type of initiative later, so.
And this is just to demonstrate spending over time. And so as you can see, as the years go back, significantly less has been spent with the, with Corvallis Public Schools Foundation raised money. We just wanna point out to the board that you can see that it continues to increase. And so the investment that the district has in the Public Schools Foundation is, we, offers a great return.
So these are dollars specifically for our foundation initiatives, those board-aligned initiatives. So this does not reflect all of those specific program-directed funds that we also help manage. So, you know, like, ten years ago, it was a fairly small amount of what the foundation was handling, and now you can see it's growing over time, so. It's a good ROI. So the other thing that happened in the past year was that our board undertook some strategic planning work. Our strategic plan kind of expired over COVID. So we started the work of revisiting our strategic plan with some community input, with our strategic retreat, strategic planning retreat in the spring, and have updated our mission, vision, committed to values, that I wouldn't say we operated without values before, but we committed to them for the first time, which is exciting. And we're in the process of developing our strategic action plan to guide our work over the next five years. So that will be something that we'll share when the time comes. I would say that the board is very committed to significantly increasing the impact that the foundation has in our schools. And to do that, we can skip to the next slide if you want. What we recognize is kind of our focus over the next five years is continuing to build our infrastructure. You know, when you look at that chart of the increased spending on foundation initiatives, ten years ago, we gave away ten thousand dollars in learning enrichment grants. Now we give away, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars plus other grant process. And largely have been operating with kind of the same system. So if we wanna triple that, which we would like to do, we recognize that we really need to invest in just shoring up systems, operations, infrastructure that will help us become more efficient and be able to deliver more. We also know, as I said at the start, when I talked about the investment in adding that additional staff person, we know we really need to engage the whole community in this work. And only then can we really grow our fundraising. So it's kind of like an inverted tree, I suppose, you know? Like, our root is, we really know we need to have this strong foundation and then engage all the community members to grow. So that's really been the highlight of our work over the last year. And then we were hoping just to entertain questions and comments from the board.
Thanks for the presentation. It's like, always awesome to see all the work. And do board members have any questions or comments? Oh, Chris, Judah?
Just expressing gratitude. I was kind of flipping through there and looking at the grant for the Catherine Jones Harrison Garden. And I go by that garden every day on my way to work, and I actually remember noting a change and then seeing that come back to you and thinking about how, because of this work, that, you know, school class got to go on a field trip to the Eugene Science Center. So thank you so much.
Just also, a lot of gratitude to you and all that you do. It's quite impressive, the integrity of the foundation and all that you have contributed to our students, the summer program, our students that are challenged in different ways. And so I have a big thank you. My question for you is, how's it working to have your office there at Bessie Coleman?
Do you say that because I see you this frequent, like, Chris? How's it working? You might have to ask Tracy Fisher. I hope we're good, I hope we're good tenants. I think it has really positive aspects and then also challenges, right? Like most things. So I love being in a school. It keeps you grounded. I love being around, like, at lunchtime when the volume level goes up. And we can hear Mr. Novak's class right behind us, we share a wall, and that's super fun to listen to. And so there's a lot of that that I really like. It's a little difficult not having, like, a storefront, for lack of a better, where we're really out of sight. And I think that is one thing, if it seems like this is becoming like our semi-permanent or permanent home, I think we wanna think about that. Like, how do we have some more visibility? And even for guests who come to see us, like, it's not always, like, obvious how they can meet with us and such. And then we lose out on, like, the hallway conversations here at the district, right? So we benefit by getting, being in touch with kiddos and teachers and stuff every day. But things that would just be, like, not a meeting, but hey, we just were seeing each other refilling our water bottle and talking about, oh, yeah, I meant to tell you about blah, blah, blah. We lose those opportunities. So, you know, I think it has positives and it has drawbacks, yeah. Good question.
So I'll echo what others have shared in terms of gratitude. Just so much gratitude for the incredible work you're doing, for the awareness building in the community that you're doing, as well as the opportunities that you're creating in alignment with the school district. And then also the Imagine Grants and the Student Yea Grants as well are such a wonderful way to really honor staff, to be able to say, here are needs that we see in our classrooms and our schools, and to, to reach out and have that opportunity to apply for funding, and then the same for students. I know you've really made it a learning opportunity as well for students to go through that process of identifying an issue, a challenge, a need, and having an opportunity where they actually can be successful at bringing in grant funds to see those projects come to life. So that is just incredible. And I know that those have just opened up in terms of taking applications. So I'm wondering if you could say something in case community are listening, in terms of the windows when each of those grants is open for folks to apply to?
Sure. So for staff, that, the Imagine Grants, that opens in the summer, in August, and closes October first. So that just closed. And now we're in the process of reviewing, in collaboration with our district partners. And then our board committee will be meeting to award those. It's kind of a lengthy process before people are actually notified of their awards. And then the student grants, the Yea Grants, just opened October first, like you said. And those applications are due, I believe, December first. And then I don't have off the top of my head, I think our notification is in January, yeah. Yeah, it's tricky. We've looked at the timing because with the Yea Grants, it can be challenging because kids don't necessarily have a lot of time to spend their money, you know? But if you open it up on kind of day one, they haven't had a lot of time to just settle in and kind of get inspired and have their ideas. So, and that's a newer program, as you probably know. So we're still kind of playing with it. I think the timing is earlier than it was, you know, when we started it, so, yeah.
Sammy, before you ask your question, we're out of time for this agenda item, but we're also ahead of time. So I'm gonna go ahead and extend the time for five minutes.
Thank you, and happy to differ. I'll be brief. I had a question, comments, and then question. The first question, maybe as a placeholder for later. I have a little bit of curiosity. How would that look like in terms of the foundation fund on our school district budget? So maybe for a future financial statements presentation from Lauren? Or the budget presentation? If there's any transfer of funds or elimination of the fund, I would like to see some explanation. How would that look like and explain the efficiency? I understand maybe that it is not the place for going in detail to it, but just to understand how we're moving forward in terms of categorizing that on our side of the budget. So that's just a curiosity I have. My comment is, thank you really for sharing this progress. It's phenomenal progress, seeing the MOU really enshrining some traditions and practices that the chair is a liaison. I know lots of responsibilities on the chair, but this is a very important partnership. And having the chair being the liaison means a lot, and the superintendent to support that work means a lot. And having the MOU there in place is something to be celebrated. I appreciate you highlighting that. I appreciate that the state summers, sorry, the summer school has been funded solely by the foundation because Corvallis School District did not make the cuts, or not solely, probably dominantly.
There's 21st Century Grant.
Okay, high school program and significant contribution from the foundation because we did not get to the summer school funding from the state because it was 30 million instead of 50 million. The triage was Corvallis was not one of them. But luckily, the Corvallis was one of them because of that community support through the foundation. So really, thank you. I want to highlight the trend that you saw from 2017, you presented from 2017. And I'm highlighting that because you did highlight it to me before. And I'm going to highlight another unfortunate trend from 2017 in the next report. So on an optimistic note here is to see us skyrocketing in revenue and in investment since 2017. It was around that time, 2017, 18, that both boards strengthened that coordination, sharing what the goals look like for each organization, how we can align them, support them. I'm reflecting on the time before the COVID when the Arabic Club students and families came in here and the room was full. And when the chair at the time said, let's figure out what can we do? And we heard like cheers about that. I can see that, I can hear the cheers still as I see the $2,000 investments from the foundation to the Arabic Culture and Language Club. I can see the women in woods and Spanish and Latin voices and music. And and every facet of learning and growth is reflected in your grants. Thank you for making our students thrive in a better way than if they did not have access to those things. And that's the appreciation I have. Now, what's next? I see the pattern and I see that we're meeting twice. I don't think it's a correlation, we need to meet every single day. But what's next so we can leverage more resources to address the needs? And also a curiosity I have maybe for a follow-up discussion between leaderships and between the boards. That the crisis that we're seeing in declining enrollment, the root causes in access to housing for families and educators and any kind of advocacy we can get, is there a role for the foundation to support? And what that role looks like and is there a dollar value on it? I'm curious to know more if you have anything to share about it, or maybe we can have that as a something for future.
Well, I'm smiling and looking at Lou because that's essentially what we're planning to discuss at our joint session that's coming up in two weeks is what what is that role and that partnership? And how can we help engage the community, at least educate the community in those types of advocacy opportunities? Because yes, we we want to grow and have more impact, but we also want to help stem the losses, you know, coming from the state level, yeah.
Thank you.
As always, thank you for your partnership and the work that you do. It truly makes a significant difference in what we're able to do and the kinds of programs we're able to provide our kids. And just the just kind of the joy that your programs bring, it's phenomenal. So thanks for the work and really appreciate it.
Thanks for the partnership.
Absolutely.
I know that was like the whole five minutes is right there. I just wanted to say thank you as well. And one of the things that I think is with the graph and like how it shows like the upward climb, that's when the state investment started going down. So if you look at the bienniums of the disinvestment from the state in public education is around when that started going up from the local community. So there's always the thank you to the foundation, but also thank you to the community for picking those pieces up to help the students in the district and the staff to do their jobs. And so I think that's something to point out and also connect it to that joint session we're doing around advocacy. And really excited and thankful that you all wanted to partner on that as well. So thanks for the work you all do and for being here this evening.
Well, and I'd agree that to Sammy's point, the all the Imagine Grants and how representative they are, it's because the people in the schools are putting them forward. And we get to be a facilitator of making them happen because we are, you know, we work to raise money. But it really is the people who are in this community who are working in these schools who are making that really happen. And so they really deserve lion's share of the credit for, you know, being representative of their students in in this area, so.
It's important, thank you for pointing that out too. All right, thanks. Next on the agenda, we have Lauren with enrollment update. And this, Kim knows where those slides are? Oh, you have the slides, okay.
But I do.
You do?
I would have been fine if she wanted to keep going with it. It's hard to follow up that presentation. It's a little more exciting than this one, but as it's fall and we've hit our first our first enrollment deadline for reporting, I wanted to come and share those numbers with you today and kind of just give you a little bit of an update of where we are in the process of the year. So first, we have our enrollment history. This probably looks fairly familiar to you at this point. You will see 2024 has, those numbers have come in as sort of we expected, being our our lowest enrollment that we've seen. I think we went back to 1981 and it is the lowest enrollment. That's the farthest back that I had without having to go in the bowling alley and dig through the dust. But it's the lowest enrollment that we have had. So pulling up the last 12 years of our numbers and as well as the the current years, you can see that decline. Between this year and last year, we are have had a decline of 3.6%. And I don't expect you to know this number off the top of your head, but maybe you do. But we were expecting 6,001. And that's kind of the the target number I was hoping to see. But you can tell that we're a bit below that. So here shows our grade spread and where we are seeing the biggest differences in those numbers. As a summary, only two of our grades, fourth grade and ninth grade, were over the projection. The remaining grades were at, I will call eighth grade at, and then below. So also you'll see that our our last class of over 600, our seniors this year. And then that, you know, next year, as those students graduate out, we do expect an even smaller kindergarten class than we have this year, knowing that the birth rates from five years ago are the lowest that we've seen. The blue represents the grades that are still in the 500s, the green in the 400s, and then the gray are our K1/2s. And so you can see that there's definitely a trend of those numbers throughout the grades as well as the years. So that's sort of what what we're looking at here. And there may be some questions as to why the decline in certain grades. The kindergarten numbers is super hard to speak to, we just don't know. That's truly a guess based on historical data and what we see come in. And because the students have never entered our system, it's really hard to track where they might be. We also did dig in, I say we, Ryan dug into the fifth grade numbers specifically because there was some questions there. And so Ryan, did you want to share any of the the trends that you found while you were digging into some of your numbers?
I've all night I've been doing a bad job of that, so. So yeah, so I've looked at a number of things. I've looked at inter-district transfers. Our transfers to Philomath are the lowest we've had in seven years. We've had a few more to Albany than we had last year, but a nominal number. So we aren't seeing a significant change there. Our homeschool numbers are up maybe 10, but they are significantly below pandemic levels and still in a situation where we don't see that as the key driver of this. We looked at private school enrollment, private school enrollment for this year. Across our private schools is down from last year. Keeping in mind that that's kids in those schools regardless of what community they live in. So they're not necessarily Corvallis kids, but those numbers came down from last year. And then I looked at grade levels where there was difference. So I looked at the most significant difference at each school at a grade level between what we projected and the number of students who showed up. So as an example, I looked at at Adams, I looked at second grade because there were, there was a difference of six. So I looked at what is the story from the kids in first grade to the kids in second grade. And I met with each principal and office manager to try to get a sense of that. And generally, the majority of students moved out of the community. I think that last time we had a meeting and Therese talked, she mentioned families who were finding permanent housing in Albany and Lebanon. Some of that showed up in my information as well. There were some, another quarter of kids who moved around. There were a few kids who moved into private schools and wanted to charter. But those kids, for the most part, will be back with us in high school because they didn't go to Sandy and Christian, they went to either Zion or Waldorf or another school that they'll come back to us as high schoolers. So from looking at all that information, it doesn't lead to the dramatic drop we continue to see. I, as I've shared a number of times now, in my mind, it comes down to availability of housing and the affordability of housing in our community. And until we come to recognize that and make some changes in our practices, we have 20,000 people driving across the bridge every day to come to work. We will continue to see similar numbers to what we see in our elementary schools, not what we see in our high school. Is that cover what you wanted?
Yep, thank you. Okay, so here's the information separated out by grade still, but also at the school level. So you can see our overall difference is a negative 142 from what we projected. And you can see some trends here. Kindergarten obvious is a big one. But again, it's just really hard to put our finger on the why on that one because we we don't actually, those are theoretical kids, not ones we actually know. And so we can't get in contact with them to to see what they're up to. We also noticed that there's some schools that have missed the trend on their projected enrollment pretty significantly, one of those being Catherine Jones Harrison. And so we are investigating what's happening at those schools as well and not only grade level, but by the school as a whole. So the only two schools that we have that are at or above their projected enrollment are Garfield by five and Franklin by 11. Okay. This data just gives another picture of of what we were looking at there, but the the totals by school. So you can see the differences between the levels. So for example, Corvallis and Crescent Valley, Sheldon and and Linus Pauline. And currently, what we're seeing by the feeder schools, that's probably going to continue with the feeders as they are. And you can also see there just the, most of our elementary schools are in that mid to low 300 range.
One point to make about the middle schools, thinking about the fifth grade being at 533 currently, or I mean, sorry, the eighth grade being at 533 currently, that and then 431 the year in seventh grade, 410 in sixth grade, we'll see a significant shift in the number of middle schoolers we have in our district next year. So this is that, that's the last class of 500 or more that are current eighth graders.
Okay, this is the the spreadsheet that I think Ryan has maybe had under his pillow for the last week looking at here. But really what we're we're looking at is the trends in our elementary schools 10 and five years back. And I think probably the most alarming and concerning piece that you can take from this is that Catherine Jones Harrison is has lost about 50% of their students over that period, which is a pretty big shift. And you can see that all schools are trending in that same way, some of them a little more severely than others. But that is the trend that we are seeing.
And the same is true of Mountain View.
Yeah, Mountain View as well. Okay, and then when you look at our secondary schools, there's not as big of a difference between the five and 10-year snapshots. And really, I think that's that's speaking to what Ryan was talking about. And that's this enrollment decline, because we're largely seeing that in the elementary grades just hasn't reached our middle school and high schools yet. But we're just about to feel that in the next few years. Okay, so we couldn't talk about an enrollment update without a budget update because we spent a lot of time talking about how the our our biggest chunk of funding is really driven by number of students. So it felt necessary to talk about budget at this point. And I I think it also is important to kind of revisit the state school fund and how that's built because we know that we have a lower amount of enrollment than projected. And if if our revenues are driven by enrollment, what does that mean for right now? And for this current year, it doesn't really mean anything. The state school fund is paid off of ADM, Extended ADM, which means that they take your current year and your previous year and you're paid off of whichever one of those is higher. So that's good news. We knew that when we built the budget. I mean, I was projecting a decline in enrollment, therefore I used the Extended ADMW from last year into our projection for our state school fund revenue. So no expected change on state school fund in the current year. We will update our information with the state several times throughout the year, but they just use that really more, they'll be using that more in our estimates for next year, not in the current year. So not much of an impact as far as needing to make any sort of immediate shift. And I just want to make that clear that we're not, I I don't want to like instill panic in staff or families or you all. But this is what we were expecting and this is what we've been planning for. And so we are in a position to handle that. It's really early to talk about budget to actuals. We just finished quarter one. And based on just the timing of the meetings, we usually aren't able to get you those reports like September and October. But I will have quarter one financials for you next month. There's nothing necessarily to report there. We're still waiting for some key factors to come in, one of those being our tax statements, which we are checking the Benton County website every day and to see if we get those. And so that really as far as like property tax receipts, those are fairly stable in Benton County and easy to predict. The outlier is more so the local option levy, just with the complexities of compression and how those funds come in. So we really just want to reconcile our budget to what we had planned. Last year was a good year for local option levy, we're expecting similar this year. But that's something that we're watching out for. And at this point, everything's looking on track. Ryan did mention earlier about the issue with Osborne and that being our building. And last year, I I remember you you all asked me several times, so what is the situation where we would not be able to file an insurance claim for something that happens with our property? The roof of Osborne potentially being structurally unsound was not a scenario that I came up with in my head, but now it is, so there's one for you. We are filing a claim and notifying our insurance carrier, but we're unsure if there will be any coverage for that. Yeah, and and so we'll see how that goes. We know that that is our building, so we may have some financial responsibility there. And we will provide further information on that when we get it. And then the next steps regarding budget. And then the next steps regarding budget, we will, like I mentioned, be sharing just regular financials starting next month of as we've closed up quarter one. We are, we have these enrollment projections, which are generally what we have built our budget on for the next year. So we're playing with those now and looking at how we may make adjustments to our, how we allocate and just sort of doing that preliminary work. And I will probably have more of a preliminary update on the next year's budget in December for you. But at this time, we're still kind of just playing with all the, the pieces and, and seeing how we can fit it together. So that's all I have. Happy to take questions or any comments, things you want me to look into, whatever that may be.
I'm just gonna preemptively say, can you add five minutes on the, or maybe more? Because we were actually way ahead, so I have a feeling that we're gonna have questions and comments from the board on this one, but yeah. Questions, comments from the board? Go ahead Sammy.
So thank you Lauren, appreciate the presentation. And sorry for those who heard this so many times. In 2017, when the enrollment began, started declining, I remember zoning hearings and, not zoning, when you add property to the city, what do you call that? Annexation hearing. And folks were lining up and saying, our schools cannot handle it, we don't have capacity. And I tried to push back again and again and say, our schools are open for the kids, they're welcome to come in, don't use us as an excuse so our families can't stay in. And here we are, since 2017, we are declining enrollment. So thank you, appreciate this. My question is what's next? And I have to ask this question, part of what's next, it's open-ended what's next, but two things I want to ask is, is it prudent for us to have a dotted red line for enrollment where we say, this is the time where we will start the conversation, not necessarily make an action, where we will start having a conversation of closing an elementary or middle school? Because just pure simple math, if you see a trend going down and there's no indication it's going to trend up, we have to speak about the reality. And I think the community might be more understanding of, or even more supportive of corrective actions if they see it down the line rather than we tell them when it's happening. So I would like to see a dotted line, not necessarily of a commitment of closing a school, but this is the time where we're going to have a conversation when enrollment goes under that. Another dotted delta, when the imbalance between our feeder schools and elementaries or middle schools or high schools may re-initiate the conversation of a boundary change. So what kind of delta between those elementaries or between those middle schools or between those high schools, if reached there, we're going to have that conversation. I know our school district staff and the leadership is doing so many things in the toolbox to avoid those from happening and maximizing students' outcomes, but those are discussions that the board will have to do one day, and I would like them to know about this, thinking about the inevitable if we continue a course as, as usual, and I'm saying we, the collective city, state, and our partners who are collectively responsible of keeping our community members with kids in the community and reattracting them. So those are really wish lists. Again, really dotted line, it's not a commitment, a very firm line when we start the conversation. And a general question, what's next?
So I think one thing I want to say sort of out, out front is just that we have really incredible staff in our schools and across our district. And this challenge is, has no bearing on the quality of what is happening in our schools day in and day out. I like, I want to start with that and sort of put a flag in, you know, make, make a stance in my position there because I think that's a really important thing for people to know and understand. Because I feel totally confident making that statement because I see it every day. So I, I want to start with that. The second thing I would say is that I think we, both of your questions sort of fall under this, a long-range facilities plan process. And I think we are at a point where we, we have finished our work with our bond, we did one before that. It's time that we come back together in those conversations. And so I think that's going to be an important next step for us.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for your report. I always appreciate you so much from a person who doesn't like math or numbers. You make it very easy to read and understand, and I appreciate that. I also really appreciate your comments and yours too Ryan about the numbers dropping not due to students going to private school, because I think there's a huge misconception in our community about why we, our numbers are down. And I think we need to keep finding ways to record that and report that, that why we're losing, you know, why our numbers are down. Also, I wonder because, around boundaries, because when you look at the area around Catherine Jones, there's no buildings going, no new building, no new complexes or anything where we're seeing a lot of that around Adams and Bessie Coleman. And so I think, you know, I know you're already looking at that and thinking about that, but, you know, wondering about boundary changes or something, which I know is not a popular thought either. So just wondering about that.
So that would be part of the conversation we'd have as we think about long-range facilities planning. And then back to the statement you made about private schools. So when I came to Corvallis, we had about 6,600 students, and now we have about 58,500. And that's about 750 fewer students. I don't see anywhere that 750 students have popped up in any school or across schools that would show a balance between those two hydraulics. So I don't, I don't, I know that there's that narrative out there, I don't think it's accurate.
I was reading a piece recently that says something like, if you live in a place where the person who sells you your coffee and the person who bags your groceries and the person who fixes your house can't afford to live, then you don't live in a town, you live in a resort. So I just want to bring this back to Corva, Corvallis is a wonderful place to live. I love it here. This is my favorite place I've ever lived. I've lived a lot of places and I'm intending to stay. And this is a great place to go to school, and we need to offer that affordable housing so that the people who work here and the people who want to be here can be here because they are welcome and we want them here and not just for this reason. And I just express gratitude as we're looking at the results, the direct results of economic inequality.
I just wanted to go back and, and build off of Chris's comment a little bit too. And I think the comment that's coming or that's continuing to grow from the board around thinking about misconceptions from the community. And just wanted to also clarify another point. I know that community members have reached out and, and had question around are, is there a bleed out of students going to other private schools? And that there are examples of that, that many of us know folks who have done that. And so also clarifying that it's not that that's not happening at all, but that the trends of students transferring to private schools, transferring to other schools within districts, across districts, moving out of the district, is, those numbers aren't significantly different from past years, what we would expect in those patterns and trends. And so the sharper decline in enrollment overall isn't being driven by a sharper shift in where those students are going, aside from Ryan, I think in the research you've done and that you've shared here as well as beyond, seeing that the sharpest decline seems to be coming with folks moving out of the community. And so just wanting to clarify that for community who are listening too. Not that there's no change happening or that we're trying to cover up change that's happening, but just to look at what's the change that we'd expect in a typical year versus now that these trends seem to be increasing and accelerating, what's actually driving it?
That, and, and birth rate.
Thanks Shauna. Yeah, that's a, that's always, sometimes those, the comments of everybody leaving is contained to the folk that people know too. And so if you know a lot of people that are in that situation, just like any other year, as it's been pointed out, that's probably what they're seeing. So thanks for pointing out Shauna, that, that is some people's experiences, but not the overall picture for the district. So I did have a question about, just a clarification, you said there was the lowest enrollment since 1981. Is that the percent, or was that the percent decrease was the lowest? Or the number of people? Because that seemed kind of high for 81, but I might be wrong.
The total actual students in our building, that's the lowest since 1981.
Okay, so that's really, if you think about how much the city has grown since 1981, that's, and how many, the number of schools, that's a huge, okay, thank you. I thought I was, I was like.
No, you're understanding.
I understood it correctly? Okay, cool, thank you. That was, that's pretty.
And we could only go back to 81, but there are over 7,000 students in 81, which leads me to believe there are probably more students in 80 as well, but that's as far back as we went.
Okay. Yeah. Then my other one was looking at the, because I've been, I've been asking about birth rates since I joined the board, and every year I ask about it around budget time too, and been watching that with everyone. With the K through two numbers, that was a huge drop, and that was what the birth rates were showing. Is that what you all are seeing, like the continued trend from like the birth rates of the kids going in, in the next few years?
Yes. And we have, the, the data source gets updated every December, so I will have more information from, for you on that. When we look at our like multi-year financial projection, but the years, I mean, we know about all of the children born through 2023, because it's a, an annual count, and so we know at least through that far, fall of 28.
And they're all going down every, it's continued to go down, right?
It, there's some years where it just kind of, yeah, bounces up and down maybe like 10 to 20 kids, but.
We're not seeing a jump up like.
No, we've not seen any jumps up, and the, the lowest in the data that we have is the students that will be arriving next year.
Okay, thank you. I think, I know people are always like, why do you always ask about that? It's really important because it's a national trend, not just here, and we, we've talked about it a lot of times, and goes back to the housing, goes to climate change, goes to all kinds of things. And people leaving town, I really appreciate you pointing that out Judah, because I, I really think that this is a great place to live as well, obviously is why I came back and to live here with my kids. But I'm hoping that people see this as a place they want to come, because this is not a Corvallis issue, this is like a national issue, not just a state issue. So I'm hoping that we see, we see people want to come here and they're not going to want to if they can't afford to live here. So yeah, that's, it was just a statement, I guess, but thank you for your time this evening. We went over 43 seconds, it's fine, it was my fault this time. Oh, do you have one more thing? Go ahead. No, it's Ryan's fault we're going over.
Just one other thing, we have been, a group of us have been advocating for the council to look at their SOP, which is sort of like their board goals, and to make sure that there is a priority within those related to housing, that has metrics that are, that we can track. At a future meeting, we've asked Paul Belada to come and speak on, to give an update from the city around housing and housing starts, and some of that information as well. So that will be coming to you, I believe he's coming into the next meeting. So if there's questions that you have related to housing, that would be a great opportunity to ask quite, some questions of, of Paul and where, where the city is headed.
Thanks Ryan. And just one more thing I just thought of, it's like, that's not going to solve all of the issue, the housing. So I think that there's a misconception that the board is really super fixated on just the housing fixing everything, and it's just one piece of it that I think a lot of us feel would be very helpful in helping address some of the numbers, but yeah, okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the Division 22 report, and Melissa is available to answer questions. So do you have information as well you would like to say?
I just would like to just again, remind that we do a Division 22 report each year. It's our responsibility to report to Oregon Department of Ed that we are meeting all of the standards of public and elementary, secondary schools in our OAR. And you have the cover sheet and you also have the report itself. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Any questions from the board? Go ahead Chris.
So do I understand it right that PE teachers are going to be doing the caring curriculum?
No. So the PE teachers are going to continue to do the PE that they're doing now at 40 minutes twice a week. And the plan is for our elementary schools to work together to create a move, add movement to, to our caring schools community, and our classroom teachers can deliver that. And that is the difference between elementary and middle school PE minutes, is that elementary PE minutes can be delivered by the classroom teacher as long as they're aligned to standards. So we're going to make use of that time beginning next year. So our students who already do a community circle every day, part of that community circle will be movement, and that movement will be aligned to the PE standards, and that's how we'll get our extra time in. Portland Public does this, using the same curriculum.
I think I see some of it happening already in kindergarten classes.
Yeah.
And it's amazing, and the kids love it. And it's so good for them to, you know, get some movement out in between different things that they're doing throughout the day, so.
Yeah, thanks.
That's great.
Other questions from the board? Okay, there's, does anyone wish to make a motion?
Chair, I move to approve the Division 22 report for submission to ODE and to be published on the district website, and authorize the district to include up to 30 hours of professional development time, up to 30 hours for parent teacher conferences, and up to 60 hours of recess for students in grades kindergarten through grade three for calculation of instructional hours.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Sammy and seconded by Judah. Is there any further discussion? It has been moved by Sammy and seconded by Judah to approve the Division 22 report for submission to ODE and to, and to be published on the district website, and authorize the district to include up to 30 hours of professional development time, up to 30 hours for parent teacher conferences, and up to 60 hours of recess for students in grades kindergarten through grade three for calculation of instructional hours as submitted. Chris?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Shauna?
Aye.
Judah?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion passes. It's a very long motion. Yes. Okay, we're gonna take a brief break at this time before we get into the rest of the agenda. Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for, um, our break, I forgot we started so early tonight, cause we have, um, more business later. Um, thank you, Judah, for pointing out it was time for a break. Um, next item on the agenda is consolidated action. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for action. Does anyone have a question about anything in consolidated action? Does anyone, okay, did you wanna pull something?
Do not pull something, do we, just having, having this declaration as a part of consolidated action, we don't declare it? Under XA?
It's being declared through the.
Oh, thank you.
Through the action, yeah. For clarification, it was a, it was a question about our declaration of budget committee vacancies, and it's declared through our action, that's what that side convo was, sorry, okay, does anybody wish to make a motion?
Chair, I move to approve the consolidated action as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Sammy and seconded by Shauna, is there any final discussion? Okay, it's been moved by Sammy and seconded by Shauna to adopt the consolidated a, action items as submitted, Chris?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Shauna?
Aye.
Judah?
Aye.
Can I vote aye? Passes unanimously. Uh, next on the, um, agenda is consolidated information. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for discussion. Would anyone like to discuss an item in consolidated information?
Uh, DJC?
BBF?
Any others? Okay, so we have BBF and DG, G, DJC, not the AR, right, just the policy?
Uh, it might be a combined question, so probably let's do both.
The AR too, okay, let's start with, um, BBF, Judah?
Um, so I really appreciate all the clarification and rewording that has gone into this, um, reading, and um, my only small thing was under number three, under the board member, not three, um, number two, for the board member's standards of conduct, we had discussed having, I guess it could fit under some other ones, s, some more clarifying statement about having discussions during breaks or before and after meetings that are not, per, cannot be school board business, that, um, it's kind of alluded to. I was wondering if we had discussions about having a little bit more clarification around that.
So that one we added to the, um, board, um, and superintendent working agreement. So that was the, that annual, um, not the policy, but the annual agreement we, we shared together, and we did add some language there about, um, quorum even when we're on break.
Thank you for that clarification.
Was that everything for BBF? Okay. Um, DJC, Sammy?
So DJC is regarding the bidding requirements, and I have a question for the district and staff.
I, I need to phone a friend, so can Lauren be available to answer a question?
Bidding requirements, so I do have a question about it, and as a background, uh, it appears that the OSBA is recommending a policy for the board to adopt, where the board is the local contract review of board, the LCRB, and, uh, we are opting, this board by this policy, recommended by OSBA, is opting to not adopt its own rules of procurement. Consequently, the first line is, we're adopting the Oregon Attorney General's model for public contracting rules, uh, shall apply for this district, so, couple of questions here, the, the first question is our method that we did, or one of the methods we used, the MC, MCJC. GMC. Yes, GMCJC, is that going to be allowable by this model, number one, number two, shall we consider asking if we should adopt specific rules that make, may make our business better, or are we deferring to the AG's model, uh, and we're comfortable with that? So I just wanna make a sanity check, that we're okay with deferring to their rules.
Melissa, do you want to read?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, there's two different policies that are very similar, um, and we just had a, the reading, and you adopted the revision on the one adjacent to this one, so this one's specific to the bidding requirements, um, and we have followed the state, um, ORSs on this anyways, um, and so this is just updating that, our previous was more prescriptive, um, and so there was actually things in the policy that were things that I wouldn't suggest we put in a policy, because they were very specific and change potentially on an annual or biannual, um, frequency, and so then that means we have to bring back the policy and change those specific numbers, so we're really just saying that we are following um, all laws on that, and I don't see any harm to that, that's what we're already doing.
And it refers to CMJC and number six on page four of four, as a way to do pro, procurement, so that answers that specifically to your question.
There would be no effective change in how we actually do business.
Thank you.
Just updating the language.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, and, um, I forgot to pull, um, KBA AR as well, the public records request. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for updating that, it's way more clear.
Yeah.
And I think that'll be really helpful, and I appreciate the recommendation that came in about posting the fees, which is what I had a question about.
Right.
Um, are we gonna review this annually then, because if rates change, is what I'm concerned about, and, um, so if we are, should it say that right there with the, that the rates will be reviewed annually?
We can add that to number nine, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, it was just something that I thought of, especially cause, um, I think, obviously, we know, like, attorney fees because of contracts and stuff like that, but if they change their rates, um, it might be beneficial to say, like, will be updated if, as rates change, or something along those lines, even if it's not annually, because if they change their rates, I know we sign stuff with them, but you know what I mean, does that make sense?
Totally does, yeah.
And so, and the same with, like, if, um, cost of things go up, then we would wanna, we might not know they're gonna go up, and so it'd be good if we had, um, something in there, maybe, were you gonna say something too about that one?
No.
Okay, I seen you unmute, so I just wanted to make sure.
I had a question, but then, as you kept talking, you asked it.
Oh, okay, cool.
Yeah.
Um, that was my only question, was just on that part, but I appreciate it's way more clear for everybody. Okay, anybody else have anything? Alrighty, we are now on board member comments, board member comments.
I am wondering about, we've been hearing a lot about busing, and I'm wondering if we can maybe hear something from our bus, busing company to address the board with that? Is that possible?
Thanks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments?
So, just two things that I'm thinking about, one, um, just an example of educators and staff going above and beyond, that I just wanted to just give some credit to, and a shout out to, I know in the last, um, week, all-state auditions were due for choirs, bands, and orchestras at the middle school and high school level, and um, heard stories of music teachers in the district really stepping up and making sure that students across grade levels, across programs, had a chance to audition, it's something that has to go through music teachers, and I know that there were music teachers who were giving of their time after school, on weekends, um, reaching out to students who may not have had access to those programs this year, because of some of the cuts or scheduling challenges as well, to make sure students who had been involved in the past had that chance to audition this year, so just wanted to give a shout out to um, the incredible music educators in our district, um, some of whom aren't, aren't full-time staff anymore because of budget cuts, really going above and beyond and giving of their time to make sure students still have those opportunities. And that also just makes me reflect on, um, last year in our very challenging budget conversations and decisions, and knowing that cuts would impact programs such as music, such as libraries and others, that we're starting to now hear stories of some of the trickle out of what are the direct impacts on students, um, and just for us to be listening to those stories, to be mindful of those, and thinking about when, when and if, hopefully, there are opportunities, and we're talking about enrollment declines, but if and when there are opportunities for additional budget, or thinking about, um, you know, if budget models were to change in the state, what are things that educators are stepping in and going above and beyond to preserve that we don't wanna lose sight of, if we have the opportunity?
Thank you, Shauna, go ahead, Judah.
Um, when we're going through a difficult budget cycle, we had an invitation from a librarian to join um, at the school district, and we had decided to move that later into the school year, as a lot of things have been happening, and as again, as that's being brought up to recognize how difficult these changes are, and how difficult the budget cuts are, um, and how it truly is impacting students and schools, and just to reiterate that, uh, I can personally commit that if you are inviting me to a classroom or to a library, although it might happen immediately, working with both of our schedules, that I'm not shying away from seeing how these changes are impacting, negatively impacting, um, our students and our school community, that I will respect that, um, request, and I will join, and I will listen to how, and see how those changes have been impacting that individual, that school, and that school community.
Thanks, Judah. Um, I was gonna bring up the busing too, so thanks for bringing that up already, uh, Chris, and, um, I'm just gonna remind everybody that we declared a budget vacancy, so if folk are interested, that'd be awesome, cause we need, speaking of, um, budget stuff, we need people on that committee as well. Um, I just wanna say appreciate all the hard work everybody's doing, um, for the students, and we are like super duper ahead of schedule, um, and are going to enter into. And we are like super duper ahead of schedule, um, and are going to enter into recess until 8:00 PM when our executive session will begin, which is, um, not part of the public meeting. And so we will reconvene at 8:00 PM. Um, so thanks for hanging in there as we do that. Yes?
Uh, may I ask, uh, that's before we enter to executive session, I make a declaration, a public meeting before we enter executive session?
Yes, when we come back. Or do, that would make more sense, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, just to, to...
Because there's such a gap of time right now.
Yes, yes. As long as like we're notifying the public that we will convene in public before we enter executive session.
Yes. We will come back in public and then we will enter into executive session.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sammy.
Okay, thanks for, um, everyone for your patience. Um, as we're prepared for executive session, before we go into executive session, I know Sammy had something to share.
Uh, yes, um, yes Chair, thank you. I would like to, in abundance of caution, uh, to disclose an ex parte communication, uh, about the complaints. Without discussing the contents of the complaint, um, policy KL and administrative rules, uh, KL AR, uh, preclude board members from being involved. And, uh, just for transparency with the public and, uh, both parties, I will disclose, uh, the following disclosure and ask for your permission to allow both parties and the public to for rebuttal or comments on my disclosure. And based on it, uh, we decide to move forward whether I continue to serve on this, uh, hearing or not. So my disclosure is, uh, regarding the matters related to, to the complaint, I had, uh, conversation with the appellant on April twenty-seventh, uh, between eight and nine AM or around eight, eight to nine AM. Uh, I did share with the, uh, appellant, uh, the boundaries of board members' involvements outside the complaint process or about any, uh, operational matters or any issues that may end up becoming as a part of a complaint, uh, including, uh, referencing policy KL and, and KL AR in terms of how they define, uh, the complaint process. Uh, I believe, uh, the information shared with me will have no, uh, influence, uh, on my, uh, involvement in this hearing. I will be considering, uh, the facts, uh, shared and the material shared by both parties uh, in this hearing as, uh, solely, uh, and I believe I can, uh, conduct my best judgment accordingly, uh, without the influence of the ex parte communication. Uh, just as, uh, abundance of caution with other, uh, co-zidicial, uh, issues around, uh, in other matters, uh, I would like to share that and I'll ask for your permission for both parties to be allowed for rebuttal or a comment, uh, on my disclosure.
Does anyone, you all or the board have any concerns or comments?
I would just, yeah, like to share that it was almost frustratingly.
Uh, you have to talk on the. Sorry. Yeah, that way.
I would just comment that, yeah, Sammy kept it almost frustratingly limited to policy and I understood, but yeah, um, he advised on, on what he could advise on and helped with that.
Thank you. Is everybody okay with proceeding? Thank you Sammy for the disclosure, that way that was super clear for everyone and following our policies and processes. Um, so now the board will now recess to executive session under the authority of ORS one nine two point six six zero two B to consider complaints brought against staff members and ORS one nine two dot six six zero two F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Everyone except the board and executive staff may now exit the boardroom. The, um, public m-meeting will reconvene in approximately one hour.